Well, good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call to order this Pierce County Council meeting and Tuesday study session. It is Tuesday, August 20th, 2024. The time is 12:04 PM. All members are present except for Vice Chair Campbell and Councilor Morrell. Both are excused. With the indulgence of council, I'd like to ask permission to move our agenda around. We have many special guests here in chambers, and I would like to respect their time, and I know we're all eager to hear from them. So if there's no objection from council, I'd like to move to our 2024 intern presentations. And then at the conclusion of that, we'll take a photo with our intern cohort, and then we're going to break, we're going to take a brief recess after that, be able to give us some time to say thank you one more time in an informal way. So we'll take a brief recess, and then we'll come back and continue the rest of the council business that's on our study session agenda. Is there any objection to moving our agenda around in that way? Well, thank you, council. So seeing no objection, we're going to move down to the very bottom of our agenda, which is the 2024 intern cohort discussion and presentation. I'd like to invite to the podium Carissa Hudson from Pierce County Human Resources, who's the lead coordinator amongst many other responsibilities in human resources. Carissa's, one of her many responsibilities is having the joy of helping to lead our intern program here. We're so excited to hear about the many accomplishments and experiences of the intern cohort. We are grateful that we see, not only we're going to meet all of the 2024 intern cohort, but we're also joined by the many staff supervisors and staff mentors who helped make this a really special and meaningful experience. We're grateful that you've carved out time in your busy day to be here today. For the record, Vice Chair Campbell is present. And with that, Carissa, let me turn it over to you to begin the presentation.
Thank you so much. As you can see, it takes a village, so it was not just me by any stretch, and I appreciate so much your time today. So as it was stated, my name is Carissa Hudson, and I am the coordinator for the Human Resources Summer Internship Program. I've had the honor of supporting this year's cohort, and we're excited to get to share this time with you. We hope by the end of the time, you will see the invaluable opportunity that this program offers its participants. So the Pierce County Summer Internship Program started in 2016 with the support of county council with just a couple of interns. It has continued to grow in both size and scope this year. As you can see, we have 15 amazing interns. Last year, we had 10, so this is by far our largest group. We continue to receive really wonderful feedback on the program from both the supervisors and the interns, and we're excited to say that this year we have multiple interns staying on to continue their work in the department beyond the end of the program. So that just really shows how valuable their work is to the county. Not only has this program grown in size, it has also grown in popularity. So I've been reached out to by multiple different jurisdictions, not only in Washington State, but other states, to ask about our program, to schedule meetings, to figure out how they could model an internship program after ours. So that's just been a really valuable, and I'm really proud of that, with the work that our team has put into this program, that it's now becoming such a popularized idea that this can be done. Throughout this summer, we have had the opportunity to go around the county. So they've gotten to go on field trips and see work like onsite at different departments. So they've been able to experience the diverse and like wide-ranging work that gets done in public service and here at the county, which is very valuable. On top of that, we've been able to do lots of training, some professional development workshops like resume writing, and even mock interviewing, which is really good practice, because many of them are starting that process as soon as they leave here to be applying for jobs. And our program is valuable in so many ways, and you'll get to hear directly from our interns here shortly about the ways that they've seen the value in this program. But ultimately, our goal is really just to expose people to the invaluable work of the public sector, doing this work for the people that we serve, and helping them to establish and kind of decide what a career for them could look like in the future. And I'm really confident that this year we've done just that. Over the past few months, this talented group of individuals has learned, and they've contributed to the work of Pierce County. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our 2024 Summer Internship Cohort, starting to kick us off with our county council interns, Tyler and Mina.
Welcome.
Thank you. For the record, Mina Hasani, council staff. Thank you, Chair and fellow council members for having us today. We're really happy to be here. Throughout this presentation, as we describe our time in Pierce County and the projects we've been working on, we aim to answer this question, what does it mean for Pierce County to be a place people are proud to call home? I'm happy to kick us off and describe my project a little bit. Next slide, please. As one of this summer's public policy interns, I was tasked with reviewing the equity note process in Pierce County and working to provide recommendations for improvement. I will present this in the next month, and I look forward to sharing my thoughts with you all. Next slide, please. As a tool for analyzing community impacts in the policy development and decision-making processes, the equity note shows the county's commitment to challenging work. Racial equity is a long-term endeavor, and by giving me this project, it shows that the county is dedicated to continually improving and asking how our processes can better serve and foster better outcomes for the residents of Pierce County. I was able to collaborate with people both within and outside of this organization, and that shows how centering around collaboration and commitment to learning is a value that Pierce County holds. I was able to interview department staff, council staff, the council members themselves, get the background for what practices people think are working, and what areas we have for growth, and we'll use this background to inform my recommendations. Just as well, next slide, please. I would like to give a shout out to Denise Johnson, former clerk to the council. I feel very lucky to have had the opportunity to meet and work with her, even if it was only brief. As a Pierce County employee of 36 and a half years, I was really struck by her words at her retirement party, where she talked about how, as a public servant, she prioritized quality and pride in her work, maintaining accuracy despite the fact that we are often working in a fast-paced environment and being asked to keep up with a lot of tasks. As someone who grew up in Pierce County, I'm proud to work for an organization and live in a community that values the time and service that people like Denise contributed to Pierce County. And I can have confidence that these values will continue to shine through in the wake of her retirement. With that, I'm happy to pass the baton to my fellow council intern, Tyler.
Hello, council. My name is Tyler Zamira, and I am also the public policy intern with the county council. Next slide, please. So I just want to give a quick overview of my project. As some of you know, I was tasked with the creation of a data book for the council to use in reference in policies, policy decisions, or just tracking performance within the county. So in that, I create a week-by-week plan, and after that, I discussed with heads of different departments and figuring out what they're looking at when they're tracking their own performance. And then after that, I've had conversations with a couple of you guys, but I want to figure out what you like, if there's things you want me to add, or if there's things you would like me to remove. And I'm still in the process of reaching out to some of you, so I look forward to talking with you guys in the future. And then also, while I had some free time, I wrote a proclamation, actually, which was for Opioid Awareness Day, which was really exciting, and I'm actually really proud of that. Next slide, please. So I really want to talk about a place people are proud to call home. This phrase hits really hard for me. And with that, I want to give a quick story. So I'm born and raised in Tacoma. My entire family is from here, and I, a quick little fact, someone from my family has graduated from Lincoln in six of the last seven decades. Shout Denise, that one's also for Denise. And then also, I stayed close to home when I went to college. I went to UPS. Go Loggers.
Go Loggers.
And with that, I feel like I embody what the statement means, a place people are proud to call home. Sorry, I'm incredibly proud to call Pierce County home, because that is what I've done my whole life. It is my passion, and I have made it my goal to serve the people of Pierce County. And I think that the people of this wonderful county would feel incredibly proud to know that one of them is working for the county. I think that the lovely people of Pierce County would feel great knowing that this internship gave a life-changing experience to just a kid from South Tacoma. Thank you.
Thank you. For the record, Councilor Morrell has joined us.
Good afternoon. My name is Molly House. This summer, I have been the legal intern in the clerk's office. Next slide, please. What does pride in Pierce County mean? Having access to resources and help when you need it. The Pierce County map logo on the slide represents the main project I've been helping with this summer, a domestic violence court navigator program. The program aims to enhance courtroom efficiency, increase access to justice, and build more public trust in our court system. Non-lawyer navigators will provide access to justice for pro se litigants by helping them maneuver the complex legal system, answer legal information questions, and provide clear pathways to community resources. I hope my research, vision mapping, and design elements will contribute to the pride residents feel in Pierce County. All residents should have the support they need to navigate the court system. Next slide, please. The objectives of my additional projects were to increase access to clerk's office services, as well as strengthen connections to community partners. I assessed gaps in resource communication using interviews with clerk's office users and courtroom observation. Using this feedback, I revitalized existing resources, such as the pre-trial services brochure on the slide. I aim to serve the target audience with brevity and an emphasis on visuals. I also created several new resources, such as a poster of legal definitions, to help petitioners as they file protection orders. One woman I interviewed said, "The resource was really helpful, because I'm new to the legal system, and I'm unsure what a lot of this means." That interaction was one of the most rewarding experiences of my internship. Next slide, please. I am deeply grateful for the opportunity I had to collaborate on the development of a county-wide program, an experience I will carry with me as I passionately pursue public service law. I want to extend heartfelt gratitude to Casey Lowdy and Constance White for their amazing mentorship this summer. Thank you.
Hello, I am Jenna Levati, and this summer I was the advocacy intern at the Family Justice Center. Next slide, please. This summer at the Family Justice Center, I saw the prevalence of domestic violence in our community and learned how the FJC changes lives by helping survivors find safety and comfort. I attended several community outreach events, including Mosaic, where I maintained community partnerships and shared resources to help people in our community experiencing intimate partner violence. I enjoyed documenting the outreach calls that our advocates make based on referrals from local police departments and the prosecuting attorney's office, where we check in to ask people if they're okay, and how we can best support them after a DV incident. I also documented calls to our domestic violence helpline, providing support for survivors, family, and friends, who are often taking the first steps towards safety. I attended domestic violence protection order hearings to connect people to our resources and provide emotional support. I enjoyed watching clients get their orders granted and celebrating with their advocates. I updated some of our DV education materials, finding the most recent statistics about domestic violence. And finally, I completed our social media campaign for Domestic Violence Action Month this October, which will encourage people to take a different action against domestic violence each day. Next slide, please. The Family Justice Center makes Pierce County a place people are proud to call home by offering a place for survivors of domestic violence to feel supported and understood, sharing a commitment to survivor's safety and well-being, providing access to multiple resources with one walk-in, advocating for people with intersecting identities, and offering trauma-informed care. Although I did not grow up in Pierce County, I have loved the time I've spent here over the last four years, and especially the time I spent at the FJC this summer. And I'm proud to have called Pierce County home for this chapter in my life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Olivia Buckner, and I am the Building Efficiency and Home Repair intern in the Human Services Department. Next slide, please. In weatherization and minor home repair programs, we help low-income families be more comfortable in their homes, especially during the winter, with no cost to our clients. We are improving the safety and energy efficiency of their homes, and we're not just meeting immediate needs, but we're also contributing to a stronger, more inclusive community. In the upper picture, I am looking at the insulation and seeing the R-value of the, at the bottom of their crawl space, and R-value is what the metric we use to measure the thickness of insulation. In the bottom picture, I am doing a blower door test to check for air leakage. Next slide, please. Having moved here from Minneapolis two years ago, I've quickly come to see why Pierce County is a place where people are proud to call home. The welcoming community, the stunning natural beauty, and the county's commitment to sustainability make it a place where I feel proud to live. In the two pictures here, these are two pictures of my favorite tour of the landfill that we toured on, and it was a really cool and great experience. Next slide, please. My work in this internship has been very valuable in shaping my future. It's given me a deeper understanding of real-world challenges that low-income families face, especially in housing. This experience will be a strong foundation as I pursue a degree in finance and explore my interests in real estate. It will help me approach these fields with a greater awareness of how financial decisions and property management can impact people's lives. I'd also like to give a big thanks and shout out to Dawn Falconer, Shilia Florence, Matt Schreier, and Michael Johnson for giving me this special opportunity and made this an amazing experience, and made me feel comfortable coming to them for any questions that I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Taisha Brownell, and I worked in the best department in Pierce County, the Department of Emergency Management. I want to thank my supervisor, Scott, and my mentor, Wyatt, for their incredible support. Next slide, please. Two of my favorite tours we went on this summer were the landfill and wastewater treatment plant. It was fascinating to see how everyday water and trash are processed. I also was able to join the fire marshal for inspections, including work in Frederickson in testing a new home sprinkler system. In addition to my internship, I graduated from the Pierce County Business Accelerator Program in July, which highlights Pierce County's commitment to supporting local businesses. Next slide, please. The Anderson Island Community Profile. My key project, I was completing an evacuation plan profile for Anderson Island, which faces unique challenges with its single ferry access. I reviewed 72 survey responses to develop a profile that first responders can use in emergencies. Next slide, please. Yeah, oh, the video's not working. Darn. That's okay. One of the coolest experiences participating in Washington State Task Force One Urban Search and Rescue Training, where I played a victim in a stimulated building collapse. These men were completing a training to stay up to date with procedures and equipment they would use on deployment. Next slide, please. What does it mean for Pierce County to replace people are proud to call home? Pierce County is my land of opportunities, where I've grown and evolved. In the past seven years, I've been an educator, and it's time I take a step of faith in going into an emergency management. I was born and raised in Tacoma, graduated from Lincoln High School, shout out to Denise, and also Washington State University GOCuts, and I received my teaching certification from PLU. This internship reaffirmed my commitment to serving this community. Pierce County isn't just where I live, it's where I belong. Thank you for allowing me to share my journey. I'm excited about my future in emergency management. Before I finish, I'm sure Katie, our outreach coordinator, would love for me to remind everyone to sign up for PC Alerts. If we can't reach you, we can alert you. Thank you for this life-changing opportunity.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Cole Burke, and I had the honor of being the Sustainability Community Engagement intern under Planning and Public Works in the Sustainable Resources Division. Next slide. So one of the things that I got to do working on the Sustainability 2030 team was working on community engagement through local events and community partnerships. This looked a lot like challenging a lot of our current approaches of informing the public and moving towards more of a collaborative approach. And another part of this work involves asking, whose voices are missing, whether that be youth, rural voices, or marginalized communities. It's really important that we do a better job at representing them. And so one event that I really wanted to highlight was our IMCA Late Night Event. It's the bottom right picture, where we were able to engage with some youth, get their thoughts, and really allow us to know what they're thinking when it comes to our future updates to this plan. However, throughout my engagement, I did notice one issue when it came to engaging the public, especially with something as dense as our Sustainability 2030 Plan, which kind of goes into how we present ourselves, and really people feeling the need to be experts in order to engage. Next slide. So one thing that I was able to do a little bit more recently was working with our communications team on creating new engaging materials when we're out tabling, involving even some activities, and other ways that have proved to be really successful, especially with our solid waste department. You'd be surprised on how excited people get when they can have digestible material they'll walk up with and engage. Next slide. Without going a little too deep into what an urban heat island assessment is, we did have one in the Pierce County. Just because the weather app says it is 80 degrees does not mean it is 80 degrees all across the county, sometimes 20 degrees warmer just due to the built environment. And so this was a really great opportunity to get volunteers engaged, something that the public has been asking for. How can we engage with these? And one of the examples we used was some youth who got involved, which really impressed us of seeing these young people coming out, engaging in this work. Next slide. So being proud to call Pierce County home, although this picture is cute, it does tell a story. Growing up in unincorporated Pierce County, I didn't necessarily understand that I was even living in Pierce County at that time. I didn't necessarily have that pride yet, which I am so thankful to this internship and the tours and the wonderful team that I got to work with that really helped build that sense of pride that I did not have before, and that I get to today confidently say that I am proud to call Pierce County my home, and so thankful that I got to work in a position that extended that same education, learning about what the county's doing to the public as well, to see their eyes light up a little bit more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Isabel Squire, and I was the Environmental Education intern this past summer with the Sustainable Resources Division. Next slide, please. Before my internship, I was tasked by my supervisors of developing an outdoor education online tool that would provide Pierce County educators, teachers, and parents with the locations and resources to do outdoor education with their students within Pierce County parks. And with this tool, the goal was to make outdoor education more accessible to kids in the Pierce County area. Next slide, please. So in order to create this tool, I created a map using ArcGIS Online and Story Maps of the Pierce County area. And on this map, it included parks and elementary schools. And then within the parks themselves, I used a 360 camera and an application called ThingLink to create immersive virtual tours of the parks. So it's kind of like, if you ever have used Google Street View, you can click through the park as if you're right there standing there. And within this, there are embedded activities and information about the park, about the wildlife, and other resources that an educator may need to teach, to take their students there. Next slide, please. So this slide was a video of the tool in action, but it seems not to be working, so we all just have to use our imaginations. Or if you want to look online in your free time, if you search Pierce County Outdoor Ed Tool or Outdoor Education, you will find the website. On the website, there is a list of resources, there is additional information for teachers and advice for teaching outdoors, and there is the map that I created. The map contains more than 30 parks, and every park has a virtual tour with embedded resources. And I think the importance of this map is what my supervisors told me at the beginning of this internship, is that teachers really want to provide outdoor education to their students, and they really understand the value of connecting students to nature, but they don't know where to do it. They don't have the resources, and they're just scared to lose a kid in the woods, which is a pretty valid thing to be afraid of. So with this tool, hopefully, teachers can get a little more of a background, and they can put at ease some of their anxieties that might hinder them from doing outdoor education. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Good afternoon. Yes, my name is Gavin Cole. I was the Sustainability Transportation Coordinator for Pierce County Planning and Public Works with the Sustainable Resources, and I'm really grateful for the opportunity to speak with you all today. I grew up and currently live in Eatonville after graduating from university. It's really nice to be back. And my main program, next slide, please, as the county intern, was promoting a bicycle benefits program, which is a national program that seeks to get people on their bikes, oftentimes, and the idea is on their bikes when normally they might have taken a car or other modes of transportation, excluding mass transit. So the opportunity to do this was really valuable to me, because it got me into communities that I may not have otherwise put myself in, and it pushed me into my, to the edges of my comfort zone, which made me grow a lot as a person, and made me communicate, or offered me the opportunity to communicate with people in our community that I really oftentimes never even engaged with. And that is something really valuable that I came back with, because there are some really amazing people in our community. And spending some time and having the opportunity to do this as an intern was incredibly valuable. So just to quickly cap up, what Bicycle Benefits does is businesses offer some kind of discount for the bikers coming in, and that is, it's just an incentive program to get people biking around. We did this mainly through emailing and walking into those businesses, and then also community events. Next slide, please. So how does this relate to people who, a place people are proud to call home, and what's the impact? The impact is these places, whether it be a bookstore, a coffee shop, a restaurant, these are third places, people, places where community gathers, and that is foundational to having a healthy and vibrant community. And one of, and many of those other factors are making exercise the easy choice and incentivizing exercise, so that we're advocating for a healthy community, reducing our car congestion on Main Thoroughfare. As many of us probably got stuck in traffic today. And so trying to reduce the traffic that is just down the block. We're reducing our CO2 emissions just for clean air. I'm sure if you've ever walked on the street or biked, and you know, a truck or a car passes, and you're breathing that air, it's not pleasant. And then also, our third place is to see engagement, which is advocating for especially small businesses in our community, which something coming from Eatonville is a really valuable aspect of community for me. So seeing all these places come together in this one moment for me was incredibly impactful, and I'm really grateful for your guys' support of this internship program. Also, thank you to my team, Debbie and Melody, and the Sustainable Resources team. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Hi, my name's Joe. I am the GS Asset Management intern with both MNO Division and SUE Division. Next slide, please. So as the title indicates, this role has two focuses. First is to utilize GS technology to make maps and perform geospatial analysis. So this project identifies potential low-income customers near sewer mainlines so the county can provide essential assistance. This project, the final result has been exported as an Excel spreadsheet and submitted to the council for further decision-making. Next slide, please. So another focus of this role is the asset management itself, using SQL to drive data from the county database and form analysis and visualization for internal clients. This is a Power BI, a Microsoft Power BI report for two sewer meaning teams, showing the work orders and the labor hours of different work types, pay types, yearly monthly patterns, so the team's supervisors can review their performance and make data-driven improvements. Next slide, please. I also work on other projects, like installing informative stickers along catch basins to protect the Puget Sound and to prepare standing maps for newly acquired county assets, and also construct the interactive dashboard about sewer assets. So in summaries, this is how this role and I help Pierce County to be a place people proudly call home. Meanwhile, I also want to say thank you to my home team, the last asset management team on the MNO, and the teams I worked with, the sewer asset management team, and the sewer asset details team. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, assalamualaikum. My name is Dani Miller, and I'm the GIS intern for Surface Water Management and Floodplain Services. Next slide, please. GIS is very important for Pierce County. It tells us where we are in terms of our goals, so that we can figure out where we need to go. So I'm going to talk a little bit about my GIS projects I worked on throughout this internship. Next slide, please. What's something I worked on? So if you look at the image on your right, you'll see a red line with a blue arrow crossing it. This is a GIS map of one watershed boundary in Pierce County with a pipe and two catch basins at both ends. This pipe is an example of what can make it hard for watershed boundaries. Why? Well, when water quality specialists are looking for causes of pollution, can't look everywhere, right? They'll only look at where rainfall and snowmelt start and are channeled by land area slopes, AKA watersheds. Pipes change the game. Let's say this watershed has a polluted creek. Hypothetically, water quality specialists can stop looking for the source of the pollution before they reach this other catch basin on the top. These maps provide visualizations for water flow that water quality specialists might not otherwise see. Next slide, please. What else did I work on? What else did I work on? I also worked on collecting surface and invert elevations for stormwater features. Map, a map I created is on the left. I also helped GIS technicians to collect this data with the latest equipment. The arrow on the left picture is where I'm standing and the picture on the right is where I'm helping the GIS technicians. Next slide, please. So overall, my goal was to improve Pierce County through partnership. I think I achieved that by working together with my fabulous colleagues. Shall we shout out to Johnny along with Brian and Patrick and shout out to Austin. Our routines like these are so important, especially for those who are not traditionally taught it in their university majors. Next slide, please. I will forever remember this invaluable experience and plan to apply it to every skill and job. Plan to apply my skills to every job and career I go into. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Evan Gonick and I am the Engineering Services Intern within Surface Water Management Division. Next slide, please. As a recently graduated college student, this internship gave me the perfect opportunity to take some of the skills and concepts that I've learned in class and apply them to projects that are happening in Pierce County right now. So over the course of the summer, I worked on a wide variety of tasks, including updating construction plan sheets for the Orville Road Revetment Project. And this project involves the installation of a bunch of engineered log jams along the Puyallup River to provide flood mitigation for Orville Road. And this top right picture shows one of those log jams under construction. So that was a really cool project to get to see. I also did some hydraulic modeling for the stormwater manual update, did data analysis on water depths in Clear Creek to optimize the operation of the tide gate there. And I also completed the Wash Dot Fish Passage and Stream Restoration Design Training, which was a really great experience because it gave me a look into culvert replacement projects, which is super important in Washington right now. Next slide, please. Outside of the office, I had tons of opportunities to get outside and visit sites, whether they were previously completed projects, ongoing ones, or projects planned for the future. This was just a great way to see all of the work and the commitment that Pierce County has to restoring and protecting its streams. And this experience has definitely made Pierce County a place that I would be proud to call home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Marin Dickman.
And I'm Jasmeen Chima.
And we are water quality interns with Surface Water Management. This summer, we worked on the stormwater manual.
The stormwater manual provides guidance to help protect Pierce County's receiving waters and developing property from the impacts of stormwater runoff. Next slide, please.
Some of the ways we worked on this were reviewing technical drawings and figures to ensure the accuracy of details. We also read through environmental reports and literature to identify county-specific conditions and regulations that could be addressed in the manual. We also compared the Pierce County Glossary with Ecology's manual to help with consistency of terms as well as improve accessibility by defining any complex terms.
Additionally, we drafted summaries on the four main waters of Pierce County, highlighting their physical characteristics and any water quality impairments. We helped create a contact list of community members that could provide feedback on the manual updates. And we attended disappearing task group meetings that discussed how the manual could address rising issues such as climate change and the tire pollution, 6PPDQ. Next slide, please.
Outside of the office, we were able to go on a few field outings. One of my personal favorites was the Bentick Index of Biotic Integrity Sampling that we did at South Prairie Creek. This was particularly interesting to me because we basically went in the stream and scrubbed macro invertebrates off of rocks into a collection net. And this was really interesting because macro invertebrates are indicators of stream health. And what we were writing was summaries dealing with stream health. So the data that we collected was directly connected to the writing that we were doing.
Overall, this internship was a great learning experience. In particular, as a microbiology student, I'm always interested in learning about the intersection between humans, microorganisms, and the environment. In my studies, hygiene and vaccines are highlighted as the main preventative measures against pathogens. However, this internship has emphasized the significance of developing and maintaining infrastructure to keep our ecosystems and community healthy. Prioritizing the health of our local water bodies is one way we can serve the people that are proud to call Pierce County home. Thank you.
Thank you both.
Hi there. My name is Marley and I am the Floodplain Services Intern in Surface Water Management. Next slide, please. Focus is Ben and Floodplain Services. My two main areas of work are centered around Floodplanes for the Future, which is a partnership of organizations and agencies working to recover floodplains and the Comprehensive Flood Hazard Management Plan. These focuses emphasize partnerships with cultivating relationships with partners to work on various projects within the watersheds. Participating in project management has been valuable for me. I assisted with event coordination, outreach, content development, and Gantt chart creation, which is a chart and timeline that I made using a program called Smartsheet. I've also gained skills in Floodplanes by Design Contracting and Invoicing. Floodplanes by Design is a grant program led by the Department of Ecology. I collaborated with partners and Pierce County contracts to draft scopes of work for subrecipping contracts, using tracking systems and sheets for a part of this. These two images to the left on my slide were notable field outings that are taking steps to mitigate flood risks. The one on the left is at Swan Creek, which is in Puyallup, and the other one is in South Prairie, focusing on farms, fish, and flood. Next slide, please. What, oh, sorry. What does it mean for Pierce County to be a place people are proud to call home? Floodplain Services work supports community and the environment. With anything from capital projects to acquiring grant funding to implement them, work is being done to mitigate flood risks and improve various sites across the county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello again. As you have learned here today, council, the work us interns have been doing here is something that the people of Pierce County would be proud of. And these values of integrity, partnership, respect, innovation, and accountability have been instilled within us to take on to our next adventure. If you look at this map, whether that next adventure is staying here in beautiful Pierce County, heading up north to King County, or heading somewhere far out of state like Texas or Georgia. The values we learned here in Pierce County, we will take with us and spread to our future homes and make these places a place people are proud to call home. Thank you. And with that, next slide, please. Questions?
Well, before we get to questions, I'm going to ask my colleagues and your supervisors and mentors to give you a big round of applause for your. We're very, very proud of all of you. We learned a lot and we know that you were just able to share a snippet of your learnings, your takeaways, but your excitement really came through. I love the theme of your pride in Pierce County and a place you're proud to call home. So just, just really what a joy it is to be able to absorb some of your enthusiasm for your learning and your experience. And before I open it up for remarks and questions from my colleagues, I really truly want to thank the many staff supervisors and mentors. I know you all had fun and it is a lot, it's work to make this a meaningful experience. Fun work, but work nonetheless. It's, it's responsibility to manage anyone, whether they're a, you know, a longtime employee, right? Or, or a brand new person in their first professional experience. But giving a young person their, oftentimes, I think their first or one of first professional experiences is truly game-changing, that they get exposure to public service, the important work public servants do to make this place safe and healthy and successful for everybody. But the, the work that you did to help mentor and supervise and give a really meaningful experience, the extra time and energy that you did is really commendable and we're grateful that you said yes to that opportunity. So thank you so much. Let me open it up to other comments or questions by my colleagues before we invite our cohort to come up and take a photo with us. Are there questions or comments by councilmembers? Councilmember Denson?
Thank you, Chair. I will echo your comments that I really loved the theme. I don't know if that was decided upon by staff or by you guys, but I think that that's the goal of all of us is to make Pierce County a place where residents are proud to be from, to live in, and to be taken care of. I was also just so impressed at your projects that, that they're something that we're really, are really useful to the county and to our residents. So we've really, as the county, gained a lot of your work. I learned a lot through your presentations. A couple of things of note is that apparently our landfill is a very desirable destination. And I don't think we're leveraging that opportunity enough. We'll have to talk to economic development. And I also learned that Denise has already become a legend, which is awesome and she will be excited to hear that. So thank you all and best of luck with your next adventure. And hopefully, and I'm excited to hear, I guess, that some of you are going to be staying at Pierce County and those of you that, that aren't, maybe will come back someday.
Thank you, Councilmember Denson. Councilmember Kitchen?
Thank you, Chair. It is always exciting to see this number of interns grow. As a former educator, Cole is, actually was somebody I'd waved to and he got to see me in spirit wear at school, so don't share photos. But I, I really just love that we continue that continuum, that we have students that are coming out of our colleges across the country that wants to come here and learn about what it's like. Local government is where stuff gets done. It's where we connect people with the services that they need to live and thrive in whatever community they call home. And so the fact that you've really got to just literally boots on the ground in a stream, at a landfill, or in an office, you've learned the impacts of what local government. So no matter what path you go on, you'll understand. If there's a problem or concern or something you want fixed, who do you call? It's not Ghostbusters and it's not the federal government. It's going to be your local government. And I think that instills in you something that will, you will be an asset to your community just from knowing that. So truly appreciate that. And then just, you know, in a year or two, if, if you're not, if you don't like wherever you went to, we're around, we're not going anywhere. There's still going to be a Pierce County. HR, thank you so much for continuing to expand this program and be a resource to other communities across our region and country. If people are calling and saying, how do we replicate it? We've, we've found something good. So we'll continue to make sure that we're prioritizing this as we move forward because this is how we, we build our workforce locally. And then to all the county staff that you could see the, the energy behind these young people who were touched by mentors that you've shaped their lives, whether they go into the field that you are super passionate about or they are just going to be a better employee for someone else or a better manager if they're doing their own thing. Just truly thank you for being part of their life and taking the time because as our chair said, it is work. And, but it's work when it's fun and you can enjoy it, it makes it a little bit better. So thank you for saying yes. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Kitchen. Any other final remarks or questions? Well, again, it is really such a highlight of our summer to be able to, we knew many of you and heard of many of you, know many of you personally. Not only the two great individuals that are in the office of the county council, but many of you. So we've been observing from afar and eagerly awaiting to hear how your experience went. And you did not disappoint. So well done. We're grateful that you invested in yourself this summer and had, had this experience. And again, truly grateful to the Pierce County Human Resources Department and all the different departments who hosted these meaningful experiences. Brian, let's, let's get a photo with the cohort and, and then we'll recess for just a little bit. How do you want to do this, Brian?
We'll have our interns come and stand here in front of the dais. The councilmembers can stay where they're at and stand up.
Do you want to recess now?
Yeah, so we're, we'll recess for 10 minutes. We'll take the photo, we'll, we'll say some more gratitude to our interns and then we'll come back in 10 minutes. Yeah, so we're we'll recess for 10 minutes. We'll take the photo, we'll say some more gratitude to our interns, and then we'll come back in 10 minutes. So we'll be back at 12:58.
Begin in three, two, one.
We are back from recess. We're still in our Tuesday study session. We completed our 2024 intern cohort presentations. And that was just really great. So grateful to be able to spend some time and learn from our our cohort there. We have the rest of our agenda to move through. So we are back to the top at item number two, which is the review of today's council meeting agenda. Mr. Cox, to brief the council.
Yes, Chairman, members of the council, Jeff Cox, council staff, you have in front of you your amended meeting agenda for this afternoon's council meeting, August 20th, 2024, 3 o'clock here in council chambers. You have the this agenda is in substantially the same format as the one you reviewed at Monday's study session yesterday, but let me remind you quickly some of the items on there. You have under your consent agenda, two ordinances and four resolutions for introduction and scheduling. You have under final action, two appointment resolutions, one to the Aging and Disability Resources Advisory Board, and two members being appointed to the Pierce County Tourism Promotion Area Hotel Commission. And for final action, you have four grant applications. This is on your consent agenda. Under item nine ordinances, you have three ordinances. You reviewed these yesterday. One is granting a franchise to Lake Woods, Lake of the Woods Community Club. It's a waterline franchise. The additional one is making code changes to facilitate a more streamlined review process for product project applications. That's ordinance 2024-539S. And finally, you have ordinance 2024-540S, and you also reviewed that yesterday. This is interim amendments to fulfill an immediate need for emergency shelter for unsheltered resident. There are two amendments to this. You discussed one yesterday, and there's a new one from council member Campbell that I believe Erica Rhett Hunt is available to discuss with you, and I'd be happy to answer your question.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Are there questions about the agenda before we move into amendments on the temporary housing community code? Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Chair. I just was wondering if I could get a copy of the report that validated the amendment regarding the Pierce County Police.
On the amendment we're about to discuss?
Yeah.
Sure, let's talk. We'll talk about that in just a, we'll talk about that in just a second. Any other questions about other items before we get to the temporary housing community code? Okay, I don't see any. Ms. Rhett Hunt, yesterday, we briefed on amendment one to the temporary housing community code, which adjusts the hygiene facilities ratio residents to number of hygiene facilities that was negotiated between executive departments and experienced providers who do this for a living. So that's the genesis of the first amendment to the temporary housing community code. Councilmember Campbell is bringing forward another amendment, and can you brief, please?
Yes, Erica Rhett Hunt, council staff. Amendment number two would add a recital to the ordinance. That reads, whereas homelessness continues to increase, according to the Pierce County Sheriff's Department, from January 2024 to July 2024, eviction cases increased 672%. In Pierce County, in the first week of August, the city of Tacoma reported 138 new previously unidentified people experiencing homelessness in one week, while showing only 16 shelter beds available.
Thank you. Vice Chair Campbell.
First off, that should be a correction. Eviction cases have only gone up 627%, not 672%. And I think that that we'll get that corrected before this afternoon. And that comes from our Pierce County Sheriff's Department, that information. The other two, as I reported at study session last week at the committee of the Select Committee on Homelessness, we presented the City Managers, City of Tacoma City Managers Report, which is where the other two pieces of data come from, the 138 new and previously unidentified, while only showing 16 shelter beds available, and that was in Tacoma, as I know many of us have read our email already today. And as of August 12th, which we're not going to update this, and I'll just leave that for here. Homeless management system shows there are only eight shelter beds available across all of Pierce County. The following day, there were just nine. So it's actually far worse than what I have in here, but we'll leave the numbers that I have here. So and we'll be putting that in. And I'm, so that's all that I have on that particular amendment. Any questions or comments?
Questions or comments about amendment number two? Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to read the documentation, if I could get it to what you're, what it's saying and how it's worded in the document.
Okay, I'm sorry, which which doc, which documentation?
The information that you used to create the amendment. Those reports. Or links to those.
You know, since we've started the Select Committee on Homelessness, I've done nothing but brought more and more data to this council. We've brought more and more data, and all I get is, I want more data. I want more data.
I'm not asking.
When are we going to take action on something? That's what I want to, I'll get you more data. Don't worry, there's plenty of data out there.
I'm asking specific to this period, so you already have it.
All right, I'll also get you data on people dying.
I guess I don't know that.
So Ms. Rhett Hunt, if you could assist Vice Chair Campbell in getting all council members, the back, I know you have it, the source documents that are the subject of the amendment to document. I know Councilmember Campbell got the information from the Sheriff's Department, the City of Tacoma City Managers memo to council that documents the homelessness count and the shelter bed count. If you could support Vice Chair Campbell in getting that information to all council members.
Okay.
Well ahead of 3:00 PM.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilmember Herrera.
Thank you, Chair. And I just, on this, I kind of wondered what the, know what the definition of the of a eviction case, I mean, I know a little bit about it, but when it comes to the Sheriff's Department, an eviction case can be something that someone failed to comply, like, you know, you might have that that issue, or they failed to vacate in a certain amount of time when they were supposed to, or professional squatters are refusing to leave. There's many, many different scenarios and just making sure that we're not just assuming all 672 or 27% are on the street. That's not the case all the time, but go ahead.
I don't know that, Ms. Rhett Hunt, you can correct me. I don't know that we have, when it gets to the Sheriff's Department, I don't know that we have that level of data. The Sheriff's Department is is simply doing their role, which is after there's a court order to do the eviction, they're just doing their job.
I get it. I just wanted to make sure that we're not assuming that everybody's getting kicked out on the street. And I know the intent of this amendment is to highlight that homelessness is increasing. But I just don't want the public to think that there's thousands of people getting kicked, if they get evicted, that they're immediately on the street, and that's probably not the case. I don't know if you had something to add to that.
I don't have any information about that.
Vice Chair Campbell.
And I'll point out, this is eviction cases as presented by the Pierce County Sheriff's Department. Of course, that doesn't include people who left their premises without going all the way to eviction, which is actually a much higher number than people who actually go all the way to eviction. And in some cases, evictions are resolved. In other cases, they're not. What we have seen is just a dramatic increase in number of people being evicted since the first of the year, and it appears to be continuing through this month also. And it's also put a strain on our Sheriff's Department, because they're having to go out and serve hundreds of eviction notices every month, and that's officers off the street not doing the primary role of first responding. And so this is having significant impacts in our ability to provide safety within the community. Homelessness affects more than just the person who's homeless. It strains our entire systems. Every, almost every single system we have gets strained in one way or another because of the amount of people we allow to be homeless on our streets. We need to do something about it. Thank you.
Vice Chair Campbell. We certainly do have a lot of data, and we have a very serious debate in front of us this afternoon. The top line numbers don't change, that year over year, we have an increase of 23% of folks experiencing homelessness, year over year, 23% increase, and the number of unsheltered significantly growing year over year. Those numbers do not change. There's, Vice Chair Campbell is trying to add more information to the record about the many different contribution points to homelessness, one of which is eviction, the lack of available affordable housing. Those are some of the important inputs to the rise in that 23% year over year increase, and that's what I understand. Vice Chair Campbell wanting to make sure the record is 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 clear about one of the the major input points for the cause of homelessness. Any other questions or comments about any of the amendments? Or the temporary housing community code in front of us? Well, before we get to this afternoon, you know, again, there's there's been some community conversation about public notice and about permitting and this fear that these are going to be everywhere and maybe in places that aren't appropriate, because there aren't services, or I don't know what the concerns are. I think if if these are serious concerns, and I hope we're all being serious about this super important issue in front of Pierce County today. I think it's important that we really ground ourselves in the facts of what's in the bill. Ms. Rhett Hunt, can you just remind us, on public notice, remind us what the bare minimum is on public notice in the bill? And I say bare minimum, because in the bill, there's a bare minimum, and then there's a process to get a permit to do this, a permit through a memorandum of understanding and a site plan with the Planning and Public Works Department. So they too may choose to do more public notice if the executive branch of government determines, you know, more public notice is valid. So that's why I use the term bare minimum. Can you remind council what the bare minimum public notice is in the bill in front of us?
Absolutely. Let me just scroll to that section here. So for public notice, those requirements are in Exhibit C, subsection F, and the public notice requirements include at least 14 calendar days prior to the meeting. The managing agency or sponsor has to post notice of of a meeting. So a meeting, a public meeting is required before the finalization of the memorandum of understanding. So at least 14 days prior to that, the scheduled meeting, the agency or sponsor has to post notice at the proposed temporary housing community site. They also will mail notice to all property or properties or property owners of record and residents within a radius of 300 feet of the site. And they will provide a written notice of the meeting to the county at least seven days prior to the meeting, so the county can include it on their website.
So that's the bare minimum public notice. I've heard the executive speak on the record that he's concerned about about notice. I haven't seen any requested amendments from the executive branch or my peers, but that one made clear that there is bare minimum public notice in the bill, which tracks with all kinds of other development activities in the county that are permanent. We're talking about temporary housing communities. And as as noted, there's process to go through with a memorandum of of understanding with the Human Services Department and a site plan with the Planning and Public Works Department. Those are other opportunities for additional public input if the executive branch deems that is so necessary. And that is the permitting process through the site plan and the memorandum of understanding. So if, you know, folks fear that these are, I don't know, whatever the fears might be, those are, those are addressed through a very thoughtful, I understand, we have professional staff who are being very thoughtful in in how they go about permitting these sorts of things. So these aren't going to be whatever the 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 concerns, I've heard the untold numbers or any number of concerns I've I've heard. These are to be few and thoughtful and managed and go through a thoughtful permit process through professional staff. So I want to make sure that we're all dealing with facts and factual information and not hyperbole, especially if folks didn't have the opportunity to read the bill yet. Vice Chair Campbell, excuse me, Councilmember Morale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Along those lines, Erica, with the Good Neighbors Village, what was the permit time or the notification time on that particular project?
And are we, as the Good Neighbor Village, you're speaking specifically of the Sixth and Orchard Site or a different site? Sorry.
No, this was the Spanaway Site that the Tacoma Rescue Mission is embarking on to build a tiny home village.
So.
What's the timeline there and the process that they had to go through?
So the the process for that village is very different, because it's for the citing of a permanent shared housing village. So the requirements for that include several levels of notification, including notification under State Environmental Policy Act, as well as any notifications related to conditional use permit that's required for that. use permit that's required for that, for that process.
And the main difference is that's a permanent shared housing community. We're talking about temporary housing communities here, so very much different level of notification and permitting.
And just, excuse me, Chair, if I had another question. What is the timeline for temporary? What are we, what is temporary?
So according to the language in the ordinance, temporary housing community would be allowed for up to 180 days with its initial approval. That could be extended if, if the purveyor asks for it to be extended. That can be extended up to another 180 days, that first authorization. If there's a need for it beyond that, they would need to go through the initial approval process of a new MOU, site plan review, et cetera.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you. Again, if there are any interest in any further amendments to perfect this Temporary Housing Community Bill, which is only in place for six months, while the department is directed to work on permanent regulations after the first six months and come back to council with a draft permanent regulation, where we can chew it up again and further perfect it, but that's the, that's the whole process of an interim regulation that legislative bodies in Washington State use for all kinds of purposes, marijuana shops, billboards, any number of things. This interim land use regulation is a very common land use tool to address a pressing need, and I submit homelessness is an incredibly pressing need. So this, this would be in place for six months, while the department, the Planning and Public Works Department, works on a permanent regulation that we can further perfect the land use regulation. But if folks are concerned about any of the provisions in this six-month interim regulation, please, please, please bring forward an amendment for serious deliberation. Vice Chair Campbell.
Thank you, Chair. When we first put some of this funding in the budget last fall, I think it was shared with us that it was February, March of this year, indicated that the Exec's Office knew that there was an issue around a potential sighting or permitting issue for things outside of the cities in Pierce County. And we didn't go forward with asking if any of the cities want it because of a potential sighting outside. We've had this bill, a similar version of this bill before several weeks ago. It's been out there, so we've had lots of discussions, several public hearings, and lots of opportunity for other ideas or changes or thoughts to come forward. I can't meet you halfway if you're not even willing to step up here and discuss it. I can't even bring other thoughts of other council members into this if you won't even speak up and say a word of, I'm uncomfortable with this or that. If all I get is no, I don't even know. It's not what we were elected to be here to do. We're elected to discuss issues and solve them, not just fold our hands and say, no. Councilmember Mello is right, this will come back, one way or another, in six months of permanent regulations. This is a good opportunity to put the guardrails and sideboards that you might consider important in the interim regulations. Be a lot easier if they're in now and they show success, be part of the permanent regulations that will come down in six months. I've been in the position where all I want to do is stand there and say no, and that never worked for me in the end. Honestly and sincerely engage with my colleagues is what worked and what will continue to work. And if people aren't willing to even enter into discussion on this, then I have to assume it's just about politics. In which case, then our responses and comments should be just in the political realm. I may have more amendments for this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments about the agenda this afternoon? Thank you, Ms. Red Hunt. We have a really, really serious conversation ahead of us this afternoon with a really serious public health crisis that's in front of us. Item number three is external boards and commissions update. Mr. Swanson allowing Mr. Taylor to have a reprieve.
Thank you, Chair Mello, members of the council. And actually, this is typically the busiest week for outside boards and commissions. This is actually the summer hiatus, though, for both the Pierce County Regional Council and the Puget Sound Regional Council. So knowing Mr. Taylor wouldn't be here, I will assume that's why they decided, this is why they were going to take the August off, but maybe that's not true. But the, but yeah, there is, there is still no meetings for Puget Sound Regional Council until the first week in September, and that is when you'll have both the Economic Development District Board will meet on Wednesday, the 4th, and then the Growth Management Policy Board meets on the 5th. So up until, no agendas are out for those meetings yet, but through August, still no meetings, and then when that information becomes available, we'll get it out to members.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Swanson? I don't see any, thank you. Do any other members have other boards and commission updates? Councilmember Hitchen.
Thank you, Chair. Just a update, the Board of Health and Study Session, tomorrow, we'll be receiving a report on a pretty heavy topic. It's the Child Mortality Prevention Review, so it's how we can make our county safer for children in the programs that we do that through public health as presented by the Health Department. So just wanted to give a highlight that that's coming up. Thank you.
Thank you. Others, Councilmember Morell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The EDD Executive Board met last week. It is chaired by Councilmember Conrad Lee out of Bellevue, and we kind of had a discussion pertaining to issues that impact economic development for the region, and trying to focus on several that we can actually make an impact on. And one of the good things with working with Councilmember Lee is he's very interested in geographic equity, and Pierce County, he would like for us to come up with some kind of a package that we can work on. So I'll be working with some of our cohorts to come up with some programs that we could, you know, they can't really go after one program, but if it affects all the region, they can collaboratively promote it. So we'll be working on that for the next month while we're off, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other boards and commission updates? I don't see any. Red, item number four, Chair's Topics. Councilmember Denson, can I put you on the spot? You attended the canvassing board on the council's behalf today to certify the primary election, and can we put you on the spot?
Absolutely. Thank you, Chair. Yes, it was an honor to be part of the certification this morning of the, of the primary election. I hadn't had an opportunity to do that before, so it was really, really interesting. Some things to report, it looks like there is going to be a statewide recount for one of the races, the Commissioner for Public Lands, it hasn't been decided yet, but certainly is looking that way, and I don't think that's happened in a long, long time, I didn't get a date, but kind of an exciting opportunity for our, for our election center and, and all of the election centers throughout, throughout the state to have that opportunity. If it's less than a difference of 1,000 votes, then it's a hand count, a hand recount. They said the state will certify things on Thursday, and then we could start as early as Saturday, but then they wait till Monday, just depending, because they've got to get lots of volunteers. There's over 800 batches of ballots to go through, so it's going to take quite a bit of time. You will be interested in knowing that the state pays our expenses related to the recount, so I appreciated hearing about that, too. Lots of interesting information. The top ballot boxes that received ballots this year, I'll just list off a couple of the top, West Pierce Fire and Rescue, South Hill Library, Puyallup Library, Candle Park Police Substation, Lakewood City Hall, Gig Harbor Library, Bonnie Lake, South Park and Ride, Spanaway. So I'm happy to show you this list, I always think that's interesting, and maybe I'll be strategic during the general, where I put my ballot to get some of our ballot boxes up there. Some of you probably know that the Pierce County Library had a great collaboration with our election center. People could actually go in all the way up to the day of the election and get registered, get a replacement ballot. The library staff would connect people right there with election staff to get that done. So that's something good to spread the word about. I sent people there. If they said, I never got my ballot, I'm like, at this point, you need to go to the library, because it's too late to get mailed a new one. So that was really great. And then some key statistics that I thought you might be interested in, you probably know this, but the turnout was 38.25%. Actually, there wasn't a ton of unsigned ballot envelopes. I have 30, that doesn't seem right, there's got to be more than that, but that's what I have. So I know they make a big effort in making sure people are signing those ballots. There is about 1,600 that came in late through the mail that they weren't able to accept, and the average age of voters is 58. So I'm happy to answer any questions. The last thing that I will note is, on the way home, I was starving, and I stopped by that place called Go Philly, right on Tacoma. Has anyone eaten there? Oh my gosh, it was amazing. I had one of their smash burgers, and I will definitely be back. So shout out to those guys, it was so good. That's all I've got.
Thank you for the bonus report on your lunch, Funt.
It was memorable.
Thank you, Councilmember Denson, for representing the council at the canvassing board. I don't have any other Chair's Topics. Red, item number five, other business. Mr. Dominique, our Communications Manager and Public Information Officer for a weekly update.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the council. Brian Dominique, Communications Manager. I just have a couple quick updates today. So between September 2023 and September 2024 this year, we've had a relationship with the Tacoma Weekly. They'll publish something for us once a week in their paper, and we're going to continue that relationship from 2024 to 2025. That costs about $5,000 a year. New, and what we're going to be doing from 2024 to 2025, they're going to put our county legislator on their website, along with other newsletters from around the county, and they are extending their reach into the Eatonville area through the Eatonville Dispatch, so we'll be able to reach further into East Pierce County with some council information. So that'll be very helpful. And yeah, so that's the Tacoma Weekly, continuing that, and then we have two proclamations in your PACAS welcoming week and suicide prevention month. Those will be coming up for September 3rd. As, yeah, so September 3rd, so these will go to rules and operations next week for final approval. So if you have any changes to those proclamations or any requests to changes, please let me know, or let the sponsor know, and I will work to incorporate those, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Dominique? Councilmember Herrera?
Real quick, I just was curious, what is welcoming week?
So welcoming week is basically, it's about like welcoming people into our community, immigrants, refugees, people that are coming from elsewhere, trying to create a welcoming environment, make them feel like they belong.
Thank you for the question. And there was, and we all get a lot of email, there was, there's some information to follow up on your question, Councilmember Herrera, there was some information that came out from, I believe, Carrie Waterlin on our staff about a welcoming week program going on at Tacoma Community House later in September, and so they have a panel discussion and some other activities, so there's, there's something in the inboxes from Carrie Waterlin about welcoming week in Tacoma Community House, some of the work they're doing in this regard. Thank you, Mr. Dominique. Council, any other questions? Is there any other business by council members? I don't see any. Mr. Cox, any other business for council?
No, sir.
With no other business before the Pierce County Council, in Tuesday's study session, we are adjourned.